All right, well I want to welcome everyone to the League of Women Voters Forum for Clay County and Moorhead. We want to thank the library for providing us with this really wonderful space to host the forum. And we want to thank MCAM for recording for us. The forum will be broadcast later on Moorhead Public Access and it will also be available on the League of Women Voters website if you would like to watch it again. A little information about the League of Women Voters. The League is a nonpartisan political organization. And we are devoted to educating the community and the public around civic issues. And part of that being the candidates' forums that we have for both Clay County, Moorhead, and Fargo, and Cass County. So today, we're going to start out the day with the forum for the county commissioners and the county sheriff. And hopefully, everyone has gone around and gotten the cards. And if you would like to ask a question, you can just write that down on the card. If it is specific to either the commission or the sheriff candidates, please write that down on your card so I know who to direct the question to. And do we have a timer? For the, each candidate will be allowed two minutes introduction, introducing statement. And I think until we get an official timer, one minute, Les says one minute. I can actually time you guys while you do your introduction. And then how we'll do it was will, John Everett, you can start us out for the introduction. We'll just go down the line. And then when we take the first question, that will go to Jenny Mojo. Okay. So Les will do the timing, so he'll watch him for, you know, stop signals. I think he's coming around. Okay, there we go. All right, John Everett, if you would start us off.
Hi, I'm John Everett. I'm John Everett. I'm a resident of Alliance Township, about five miles from Comstock. I have farmed most of my life, as well as operating a certified seed plant and being farm advocate and rural advocate in northwest and west central Minnesota. I've been a county commissioner for the last 20 years and thoroughly enjoy it. I have a wife and four children, adult children, and seven grandchildren. And my wife and I still live on our family farm in Alliance Township.
Hello, thank you for coming today. My name is Jenny Mojo. I am running for District Three County Commission. I am running because I think it's important that my generation steps up and takes their place in county leadership. And so I'm excited for this opportunity. I was born and raised Rusted in Kurtz Township. I'm a Moorehead High School graduate. I have an Associate of Arts degree, and I also have training as a certified nurse's aide. I would appreciate your vote and look forward to this discussion.
Hello, my name is Kevin Campbell. I am a county commissioner for the last 12 years. My wife and I live in Oakport Township, which is soon to become part of the city, that portion of Oakport Township. I served on the Oakport Town Board for 12 years before running for office for the county commission. And I have served on the county board for the last 12 years. And I thoroughly enjoyed it. And I do want to thank the League of Women Voters and the library for hosting this.
Thank you, my name's Al Gordon. I am a candidate for District Four County Commission. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this, the library, Mr. Baki. A little bit about my background, I have a four-year business administration degree with emphasis in accounting, law enforcement. I have experiences in just about every level of government, city, local, county, state, federal. I'm running here today because I've been throughout the county. And over the last 12 years, the people of the county just don't feel they've been represented to their true, true feelings and what they believe in. So I'm here to give the people of Clay County a choice. I'm here to give the people, the voting people, choices that they haven't had in 12 years. And I believe that I've qualified, I'm experienced, and I'm ready for the job. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bill Burquist, the sheriff of Clay County. I want to thank the people for having us here today. Just a little bit about me, I worked in the city of Glendon, Dilworth Police Departments. I was a loss prevention manager for the Holiday Corporation. I was a Moorhead officer for 14 years, 12 of those I was the dare officer. And I was also on the SWAT team as a negotiator. During the 12 years as sheriff, I've been actively involved in all aspects of law enforcement administration. I've had the opportunity to be on the Board of the Minnesota Sheriff's Association. At one time, I was their president. I'm also on three advisory board areas for local law enforcement educating facilities. As the sheriff, I obviously have a lot of administrative deals that I do do. But one of my favorite things is getting out and talking to the people in the county. I do many presentations every week, from our youth all the way through to the senior citizens. We have a group of what we call the Triad Club, which every community has a monthly meeting. We go to those meetings and discuss issues with them or any issues they may have, so. And thank you for having us.
I'm Ryan Alderman, I'm a candidate for Clay County Sheriff. I've got 20 years' experience as a Clay County Sheriff. I've also worked in the cities of Dilworth, Glendon, and Holly when I was starting out. I think Clay County is ready for a change. Sheriff Burquist has had 12 years to accomplish his goals in the job of sheriff. I offer new leadership, new ideas, and new goals. I'd reach out to our new American and ethnic communities to foster public safety and develop trust. I would take a more active role in our domestic violence court that we have in Clay County. And I'd also work with the schools to develop some curriculum to help our kids prepare for the pitfalls that are associated with social media and electronic communications. I think Clay County is ready for a change, and with your help, I'd like to make that happen.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the audience, if you have questions, just raise up your card and someone, one of the league members will come around and pick it up for you and get it to the moderator. So for our first question, we'll start with Jenny Mojo. And Les, how much time do they have to respond? One minute to respond. All right, so the first question is, with the large amount of state programs administered at the county level, what experience do you have with understanding the financial cost sharing between the state and county programs?
Thank you. I think as a county, it's very important for us to work hand in hand with the state. There are great programs that many of our citizens take part in. I and my husband and I have also taken part in some of those programs throughout the years. I think that I have a fiscal responsibility that gives me the qualification to work hard for these programs. I also feel like I would be a good advocate for the community members to listen to them and find out what programs are important to them and how we can work together to keep those funded.
Thank you, to Kevin Campbell.
Yeah, that's a good question. There, in the cooperation with the county and the state, there are many state programs that are administered through the county. And through a cost share process, it can depend on the ability to provide more services. So, for example, we have county staff in the Health and Human Services Department that deal with the state and deal with our citizens on different issues. Depending on the amount of time that they work with them, we establish revenue that we gain through the state of Minnesota. So the county receives revenue from the state of Minnesota, which then helps us to further provide services to the people that need them in our county.
All right, Al Gordon.
Thank you. Yes, I'm aware of the pass-through money that comes through to the state, or the county of Clay County. Clay County levies about $23, $24 million a year through its taxes. And with the pass-through money, you know, you're up towards about $100 million. Now, it's very good to be a partner with the state and to provide the services you need. But also with that, you have to take in consideration the dollars that you have to put in compared to what the state puts in and how in the future, if you can continue to fund these programs that you start. Again, there's many good programs, there's many good programs that can be funded through the county. And there's just some that simply cannot be afforded that we have to turn down. But it is important to be a partner with the state, and I would be glad to do so, to advocate for that.
Thank you, to Bill Burquist.
I guess I thought it was only for the commissioners, sorry about that.
I think if you guys just want to do the best you can, we don't want to leave you out of any questions if you have a response.
Gotcha. Well, obviously, as a sheriff's office, we work with the state officials quite a bit, with our law enforcement people. Another thing that we have done in the past is Cass County and North Dakota and Clay County in Minnesota have all got together and we share resources from every emergency system that we have, from fire departments to the rescue squads and other law enforcement. So it's been very good for us that, you know, not every department has to go buy that most expensive equipment because we are willing to share. And we also have the joint dispatch center that's been working very well for us. And again, it brought us all together and gets a chance for us to get to know all law enforcement in our community.
Thank you, Ryan Alderman.
I've actually been out to Washington DC with the Minnesota Police Officers Association. And we've lobbied to our congressional delegation for law enforcement-specific dollars. There's a burn grant that funds a lot of the drug task force. There's a Violence Against Women Act that puts money towards domestic violence issues and women's safety. And I think we need to do more advocacy at the state level and the federal level to get those monies coming in.
To John Everett.
It's a vitally important part of the way we do government in Minnesota. The state, most of the responsibility for programs is with the state. But the county is the one that carries them out and fulfills the state's obligation. So the cost sharing is a very important thing. One of the frustrations for county government is that many times there are things mandated that we need to do that do not have funds coming with them. And that's one of the great frustrations that counties are wrestling with is taking care of these mandates without the ability or the money to do it. So we have to raise our funds locally to do that in many cases. But overall, it's a very positive system in that, in that in most cases, the money does come with it to carry out our programs. And the county has done a good job of fulfilling that responsibility.
Thank you. So the next question, we'll start with Kevin Campbell. And this one is directed just towards the commissioner candidates. And that is, how well is the county providing services to help low-income families escape poverty?
Well, and again, that goes to both the combination of what we do at the county level and the state level. We need to work hand in hand between the county and the state to obtain the necessary funds to help with these issues. The, can you read the question again?
Certainly. How well is the county providing services to help low-income families escape poverty?
Yeah, the, our numbers are on the rise. If you were to go back and look, we are putting more and more emphasis and more and more dollars into that. And of course, again, it's with a cost share with the state of Minnesota. It's a problem that's very difficult to tackle. It seems like every time you start to get a handle on it, new ones come in. And it, but I think we're doing what we can and working with, you know, there's the issue going on now with places for them to live, too, is another key issue.
Thank you, to Al Gordon.
Thank you. Well, right now, Clay County is actually in a pretty good situation. We're about in the middle of the pack as far as the state of Minnesota. We have about 11.4 percent, 11.4 percent poverty in the county. Now, with the county being in a strong economic position right now, I'll have to disagree with Commissioner Campbell as far as that being on the rise. It actually has been on the decrease over the last couple of years with the economics that the county has shown as far as the growth. So I think that the county is doing a good job. I think that we'll continue to support the underprivileged and we'll continue to do a good job with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, to John Everett.
One of the great things about serving the underprivileged and the low-income folks is that we have many private partnerships. We contract with a lot of nonprofits that do much of the work for us. And that's been a very positive arrangement because we're able to reach out from many different angles to help our people. It's a continual problem. We think we've done well and that we're meeting needs as they come along, but there's always more needs than resources. So it's something that'll continue to be something we have to do. And we will, I think, in the county, do the best we can and do a good job of it.
Thank you, to Jenny Mojo.
Thank you. I was raised in a family that put a high priority on public service and serving the community. And I think that I would take that to the county commission to help that. I do feel that the county is doing a pretty good job when it comes to providing and assisting those in low-income socioeconomic statuses. I feel like our public health programs are essential to raising healthy children in our schools and keeping people healthy. Our community is only as strong as people who are struggling. So as a community, it's important to reach out and support these people. I think housing assistant programs are really important as well to where people don't have to worry so much about getting the roof over their heads and they can focus their energy on their jobs and contributing to the communities.
All right, thank you. So the next question is not directed to a specific group, so we'll have everyone answer it, starting with Al Gordon. And that is, what are your thoughts on the diversion and its effect on Clay County?
I never thought this would come up today. No, as we all know, the diversion has been, has been a real topic of discussion over the last few years. And, you know, there's been a lot of time on it and a lot of Commissioner Campbell's time on it. And no matter which way of the diversion you sit, you know, the man should be thanked for that and the county should be thanked for their input in this. However, I am an opponent of the current diversion plan. I don't believe that this is the only plan that will save Clay County, Fargo, the surrounding area. I believe in upstream, downstream, basin-wide retention. I don't believe in taking farmland out of Clay County when we were the fourth county in the state with the economics as far as agriculture. I believe there's other ways, it's been shown that there's other ways. It's a matter of how we want to do it, whether or not the federal government has to be involved, and whether or not we're going to look out after Clay County residents and not Fargo residents. Thank you.
Thank you, to Bill Burquist.
Ashley, before you go, that question is really a difficult question. I think we ought to give the candidates a little extra time.
Okay, certainly. Al Gordon, since you only had the minute, do you feel that? Oh, okay, all right. Should we do two minutes for this one? Okay, all right, so to Bill Burquist.
Well, I guess I haven't, you know, really thought about it, to kind of leave it up for the commissioners to do that. But, you know, I have talked to people and I truly understand the peoples whose land is going to be taken away is, you know, that was something tough. And they always say, well, if it's not in your backyard, it's a little easier to, you know, to do it. But I guess my thought was, I wish, you know, everything, like all the DNR, they're still waiting for that to get completed. That I wish they would have waited till it was all completed so we didn't have to have this stuff going back and forth, so.
All right, to Ryan Alderman.
Kind of along the same lines as Sheriff Burquist there. I've worked numerous floods over the years with my duties with the Clay County Sheriff's Office. Moorhead has done a fantastic job protecting the city of Moorhead. However, the county board and the states decide to cooperate and agree on this. If there's any laws that go into effect relating to diversion, I guess as sheriff, I would work at enforcing the laws as they're written.
All right, thank you, to John Everett.
Well, this certainly is a very, very important issue for the county and for my community. Excuse me. In the 20 years that I've served on the county board, this is by far the most difficult issue that I've had to face and the most controversial. We definitely need flood protection for the cities of Fargo and Moorhead. And even with all of the work that Moorhead has done and the good shape it's in compared to what it was a number of years ago, we still need a major, major project. And the diversion seems to be the project that, at least all the engineers feel is the most viable. I do still maintain that there needs to be further research to find other ways to make the diversion work without flooding out my community. And I've said that from the beginning and I continue to maintain that we need to continue studying it. I trust that the DNR report will come out and show this as well, that there needs to be, looks at other opportunities and other possibilities to make this project work without destroying much of our community.
Thank you, to Jenny Mojo.
Thank you. I've had the privilege of traveling the county and visiting with neighbors on this issue over the past few months. And one thing that rings true to everyone, whether it be from Moorhead, or Comstock, or Barnesville, or Holly, people want to be heard. And I will provide a strong voice for those people, I'll be an advocate for those people. I feel like the diversion is a great solution, however, there are flaws. And it's important that everyone comes back to the table. Sometimes it's okay to say, we've made a mistake, we've skipped a few steps, and we need to reevaluate. My great-great-grandfather is buried in a cemetery in Comstock, and that cemetery has never seen water. So I don't believe that it's important to flood these areas in order to save areas that have seen water in the past. I will work strongly, listen, and advocate for our county.
Thank you, and to Kevin Campbell.
All right, well, as Mr. Gordon has stated, I have been involved with this since 2009. And after 2009, after we almost lost both of our communities, a group was established. And it turned out to be that it was Clay County, Cass County, Fargo, and Moorhead. And when we were working with our state and federal legislatures, they all came to us and said, "You are going to have to come up with a mutual plan, agreeable plan between your government entities." We did that. We came up with a plan that can protect Fargo and Moorhead and this region's economic future, and that is through a diversion. And I know there's been comments by some local legislatures, but these local legislatures have also come out and said that they do believe that Fargo-Moorhead needs a diversion. When we get into the controversial parts, if you look back to the past, it was originally going to have all the impacts on the northern part of our county and going all the way up to Canada. There was to be over 4,000 structures impacted by that plan. By changing the plan and creating a staging and storage area south, we brought the number of structures potentially in harm's way from 4,000 into the hundreds. The latest plan that we have now, once we're able to protect the areas like Comstock and Baki and Hickson, we're down to 50-some structures that will need to have something done, whether it's a buyout or what have you. Am I still open to other possibilities? Yes, but they need to have the engineering and technical background to support it. It just can't be theories.
Thank you. So for the next two questions, since we are now starting with Bill Burquist, we have two that are directed just towards the sheriff's candidates. So Bill Burquist, for your starting question, what do you feel is the highest priority or unmet need facing Clay County regarding the Sheriff's Department?
I think one of them is, over the years, a lot of the state hospitals have been closing and we're having a big issue of people with mental health issues. And what's happening is law enforcement come in, come into them, and the only place they can take them is to a jail. A jail is not a place that we want our mental illness people to be in. So we've been, already started with the legislators trying to find out a good fix for this. But again, they're not going to get the help that they need. And obviously, we can't just keep bringing them to the emergency room, that doesn't work either. So that's something that we really have to work hard at. Another thing is, is it seems like every so many years now, our radio system has to be replaced, which is, I just don't get it. But it's millions and millions of dollars, and we just did it, and now they tell us that our stuff is no good and it's garbage and we need to throw it away. So that'll be another big challenge.
Thank you, Ryan Alderman.
Can you give me the question again?
What is the highest priority or unmet need facing the Clay County regarding the Sheriff's Department?
I think the sheriff's office can do better at addressing crimes against women and just the personal crimes of violence that have been occurring recently. I work at the courthouse, a lot of assaults, domestic assaults, sexual assaults are being processed through our courts. We have to work better at education and prevention. And if I could take a moment to address the mental health issues. I think mental health issues are a drain on the system. I don't think they're a major problem in Clay County right now. There's crisis intervention training that is available to officers, which trains them how to identify and respond to persons that are dealing with mental health crisis. And I think that training needs to be expanded through our department.
Thank you. So Mr. Alderman, for your question that you will start with, the Clay County Jail is currently overcrowded. We are sending prisoners to other facilities. What do you see as a solution, or multiple solutions, to this problem?
I believe we're shipping out about 15 inmates a day to different facilities. And the cost is, I think it's $75, $80 per person per day. We definitely need to address the jail issue. It's a can, it's been getting kicked down the road for many years. The Department of Corrections has had our jail, which is the oldest in the state, on kind of a probation for many years. It's a huge expense, but I think the dollars have to be prioritized to address this need in the county.
To Bill Burquist.
When I was first elected, the first day was the jail issue. And it's been there every day since 12 years ago. The DOC runs the jails, it's a state and even the feds. And they were told to rewrite the 2911 codes for jails to get in line with the federal rules. Well, that caused more space per inmate, and that's kind of one of our big issues are. And we do have two commissioners that have been on the so-called jail committee. They got a chance to talk to the DOC and even came into the jail. When they did come and decertified six of our beds, which means that's six more people that we are housing out. When we do have a jail inspection, our numbers are always 98%. So the jail's got to be doing the right thing. But again, we do have to look at it, and the commissioners, they have the toughest job in the world because they have to figure out how to pay for it.
Thank you. So for the next question, we'll be back to, starting with John Everett. And this is not addressed specifically to the commissioners, so we will let everyone answer. So what role do you see our institutions of higher education playing for the success of the region?
Well, that certainly is a big role in Moorhead. We have a very highly populated population of students with fine institutions here. So the, it's a big part of our economic base, the higher education in Clay County. And we'd be in real trouble if we didn't have the universities and colleges here. I think it will continue to be a strong economic part of the county. And we need to do all we can to make it work for them. We have participated by allowing our bonding power to be used by the- We, we have participated by allowing our bonding power to be used by the, by the colleges and universities in, in the city for the building of certain buildings. Primarily, it's been student housing. And that's worked very, very well. So it was a good partnership, I think.
Jenny Mojo.
Thank you. One of the great things about our county is that we are privileged to have some great colleges and universities here. I think that that brings great economic status to the area. It also brings a great amount of kids to the area. We need to capitalize on having them here, make Clay County a warm and welcoming place to retain these kids. We need to do what we can to the, the people that are graduating from our area high schools. They'll go off sometimes and, and work and we need to do what we can to make it an inviting place for them to return back to Clay County, to raise their families here and possibly go to higher education here.
Thank you to Kevin Campbell.
Yeah, I think Jenny is right on. I, I think that that's critical and I, and I think we need to take it a step further. I think we need to improve on our relationships with our economic development groups throughout Clay County. Each of our cities, a lot of them have their own. And we have the Greater Fargo-Moherd Economic Development Association. We have the Chamber. We should be coming up with ways to promote more of these students when they finish school, to, to find ways to stay and work in Clay County. That, that is extremely important. It's nice to have them here during their stay and, and learning their education. But it would be wonderful if they could call this their home. And, and there's ways that, that we can do that by working and, you know, even through the Chamber. They have a deal where they used, where they have these brown bag things where you can go in for these lunches. You can talk with experts. And these college kids can go in there and enter entrepreneurial issues and say, how can I start this? How can I, I have this dream. How can I start it? And there's people in this county and in these cities willing to help do that.
Al Gordon.
Thank you. Well, the education system in Clay County is a very important part of our county. Currently, our county population has seventy-three percent of people over sixteen working in the workforce. Seventy-three percent of people over sixteen working in the workforce. That's the highest number in the state of Minnesota. So what am I getting to? Not only high school students, but college students are making up a big part of our workforce within the area. They are here to work. They're here to do their education. We have jobs for them here. But like Commissioner Campbell has said, is finding the good job to keep them here after that part. Now, the higher education also does have a lot of good jobs for our county as far as the, the older individuals. With, with that being said, the younger the population base that we can keep, with the rising age of our state, the better off we'll be. Thank you.
Thank you to Bill Burquist.
Well, it is very important to our community. It's a large part of our community, all the higher ed colleges that we do have. And obviously, as a law enforcement administrator, I get to be, a chance to be part of their advisory boards and it, it's so, they do kind of listen to us. I mean, we go there and talk about what we are looking for in law enforcement officers. We have a very good criminal justice program at Morehead State. That's where I got my four-year degree at was. And so we do work with Morehead Police a lot on the college issues. And I think we work very well together and because they, we, with even the administrators of the colleges, they have an open door for us anytime we need it.
Thank you. To Ryan Alderman.
Take off the law enforcement hat here for a moment while I address part of this issue. I think the community needs to work with the schools and some private development into getting some other options besides drinking for the kids to take up their time on the weekends and evenings. I think we've got some growth going over here, the old coaches, trainer and trapper site. I'm optimistic that that'll be a good source for the college kids to attend. And hopefully, we'll help add to the economic development of the community.
Thank you. All right. So this next question was not directed specifically to, you know, one group. So we will again, give everyone a chance to answer. So we'll start with Jenny Mojo. Do you believe economic development is important to Clay County? And if so, what experience do you have to improve it?
Thank you. I think economic development is crucial for the Fargo-Moherd area. I, as a young mother, feel that it's important that our kids grow up in an area that, that promotes development, promotes economic growth. I don't think that it's always important to run over to Fargo to grab what you need. We need to establish businesses in Clay County. We need to keep Clay County businesses running. What can we do as a commi- a commission board to expedite the growth of the economic statuses and businesses in Clay County? I think that's important to a healthy society, a healthy county. My experience is to hold people accountable, to help listen to people, to hear what their needs are, to hear what their desires are. If they want to stay in Clay County, what can we do to help them? And I will work to be an advocate for them.
Thank you. Kevin Campbell.
Yeah. This is a really good topic and I think it's one of the most critical ones for Clay County is, is the importance of economic development. And part of the economic development that we can have in Clay County, that we're going to need in Clay County, is going to be needed to be, to stay competitive in our real estate tax issues with our border cities. Right now, we, we, we certainly have advantages in our real estate taxes here in Minnesota compared to North Dakota. And we are, we are doing and have done a lot of things in economic development. Alls you have to do is drive down Highway Ten and go through Dulworth, then go to Glendon, and then go to Holly, or go to Barnesville, or go to Saban in the last years, and see what growth has occurred in all those communities. My friends, that's economic development. And we're going to continue that by working with the, the economic development authorities, the business associations that are created in these towns that are going to help all of this. And we'll be right there to do it.
All right. Thank you. To Al Gordon.
Thank you. Well, there's four portions of economics in this county that make up about sixty percent of the workforce. You have the healthcare industry. You have educational, which we talked about. You have the social assistance as far as retail trade. You have that type of things. Yes, economic development is very important and I think that's where our county has lacked a little bit. Although, we have these towns that have brought in things. I have not seen a board on the county that has went out and promoted these activities as far as bringing economic development within the county. Now, the towns have done it. The board has set up a fund for young entrepreneurs that they can come in and borrow low interest money. But they haven't promoted it. I don't know if we've had anybody that's taken us up on it. We need to put somebody in that is willing to go out, talk to people. We need to bring the business in. We have to let them know that Clay County is a viable place to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. To Bill Burquist.
Well, we probably have a little different role with that. But as law enforcement, when a company does come in and open up a new business, it is our job to go there and meet them and help them in any way we can. I see the fire chiefs here too. Every new business they go to, they, they go to there and show them their different things. But we help them. If they have issues later on, we help them with their security. And again, it's important for us as a community to keep growing.
Ryan Alderman.
Again, along the same lines, the public safety, I'm sure is taken into consideration by businesses and corporations when they're looking for a location alongside with, you know, what are the tax impacts? What's the wage an hour impact going to be? And, you know, why is Clay County the best place for us to locate? Personally, I think the workforce we have in Clay County is, is more than adequate and probably stands out quite a bit in the Fargo-Moherd community. We've got a lot of high school kids that have jobs and they're working through high school. They're working through college. And I think that work ethic is something that, you know, needs to be promoted and encouraged in the area.
All right. And to John Everett.
Certainly, economic development is a very important issue for the county. And I think we've been doing quite well lately. The county has, does a program for tax incentives for new businesses throughout the county. And people are participating in that. We do have the loan program that Al, you mentioned, but contrary to what you said, it is being well-used. And probably not as, as much as we would like, but there are many people participating in it. And it has helped many businesses to, to succeed over the, over the years. The, I think that right now, we're seeing a lot of hopeful signs in the city of Morehead. There's a lot of new projects that have been initiated and proposed and, and that we're excited about that. The, the other cities in the county, we, we partner with them. We participate in, in their incentive programs as well. And we, we really, I think that we've done a number of things that will, will help encourage economic development. I've been impressed that there's been so much new growth in our, in our residential areas in all the cities.
So for our last question, we will start with Kevin Campbell. And the question is asking the group to address a lack of affordable housing. And the, the question that we have here specifically asks that you touch on what the county can do to assist families with children struggling to obtain housing because the head of household has a felony on their record. So we can start with Kevin Campbell.
Can you read that last part with them?
Yeah. So what can the county do to assist families with children struggling to obtain housing because the head of household has a felony on their record? And I would say this is a pretty, you know, specific question. But even if you want to address just the larger issue of the, the lack of affordable housing in the county as well, that would.
Yeah, because when you get, when you get into the felony stuff, there can be legal issues that are, that are beyond my pay grade that, that I don't know that I want to get into. I think you can get people like Ken Cole are here to talk about those types of things. But the, you know, and obviously, the, one of the, one of the major hot topics again here over the last few months was the, was the proposed Churches United facility for, apartment facility for, for taking more people. And, and I'll tell you right out that I'll do everything that I can to support single families with children, people who are disabled, veterans who have fallen on hard times and are homeless. We need to find places for those folks to live. Now, the, in the, in the controversial thing with, with the Churches United property, it had more to do with where it went. We, as a county board, don't get involved with zoning. Where, where those properties go is a city zoning issue. I support the need for those facilities.
Thank you. Al Gordon.
And I think everybody at this table supports that also. It's just a matter of how we're going to do it. We have social services in place. We have HUD in place. We have different things in place. We have low-income housing in place. We need to balance as far as what we can spend and how we can best utilize those resources to help these people. Again, nobody here would put anybody out on the street if they had the choice. We just need to allocate the resources as we best can, work with the agencies that we already have in place. And we have to find places for these people to live. Thank you.
Thank you. To Bill Burquist.
Well, as law enforcement, we do support it also because we deal with them on a daily basis, sometimes three, four in the morning. And it's twenty below and you have no place to bring them. You know, we do have the buildings here full, but when they're full, they're full and we have to find other places to bring them. But as far as, you know, the felony issue, again, that wouldn't even be under our, I know some landlords have the right to do a criminal history, so I would hate to take that away from them. But to have that property where we could put them would be a very good thing for all of us.
Okay. To Ryan Alderman.
The community has, in my experience, been pretty accommodating when it comes to the, the families through the YWCA over in Fargo and the Churches United here in Morehead. In my experience working on the street and, and ending up in situations where you may have a car broke down on the interstate in the winter with a mom and two kids, there are some options. And there's also been some vouchers that have been issued where they, well, temporarily place them into short-term hotels. As far as the felony issue, I think it would largely depend on what the felony was. It may be a nonviolent property crime, or, you know, it could be all the way up to a, you know, sexual predator. I think those issues would have to be taken into consideration in the big plan.
All right. John Everett.
Well, I think that it is a big issue for people with, with felonies. And I'm, I'm troubled by that because if they have served their time and paid back society and, and by, by living out their sentence and so on, it seems to me that they should not be denied the right to live where they want to. And I know it's a right for apartment homes, apartment houses to, to make that decision as to who they'd let live there. But at, but at the same time, it's something we need to work on. I think we, it would be good to have a thorough study of that and find out how, how serious the problem is for Morehead and try to find a way to, to resolve it. Because it is very unfortunate that people are, are not allowed to have a place to live because of a past deed which they've already paid the society back for.
Okay. And to Jenny Mojo.
I agree with Commissioner Everett on this. When it does come to people who are nonviolent offenders that have had a felony and have, have served their time, it's unfair if they are judged in that aspect on housing. Clay County is a, a great place and I think there are people that are struggling. We have in Morehead, I think, unemployment of less than three percent, but there are people that are still struggling. It's promising to me to see the amount of apartments that are going up in Morehead, close to the schools, to give people the opportunity to attain that. There are public policies that are helping to serve as in- incentives or, or help to people that cannot afford these. But, but it is important that as a community, we do what we can to embrace these people and help them to get back on their feet so they can become productive people of our community.
All right. Thank you. So to wrap up, we will give each candidate a one-minute kind of closing statement. And we will start with Al Gordon.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's good to see everybody here that's interested. And it's really a pleasure to talk to people that are interested in the issues. I began this earlier in this year when I found out through several sources and through the announcement that Commissioner Campbell was not going to run for reelection. I went through not only just our district, but I went through Clay County. And I explored the possibility of making a run for the candidacy of District Four. And through that exploration, I found out through several people that it was time for a change. After twelve years, there's several people that I've never seen, talked to Commissioner Campbell. Their voice has not been heard. The people of the Southern County has invited them down to their meetings to listen to their concerns. He has not once been there. I'm here to accommodate the people of Clay County. I want to be a voice and an advocate for the whole county. I'll be elected through District Four, but it doesn't stop at District Four. I'll be a voice for the county of Clay. Thank you.
Thank you. To Bill Burquist.
Well, again, I would like to thank the league for having us here today and for all the people that came here to listen. We have a strong cooperation of efforts on all fronts. When it comes to emergency services, like I said, we've worked hard to get us all together. We don't worry about the fact that we have a red river between us and another state. We still together, work together. And again, bringing the resources together helps all of us. I'm very committed to having an open door policy. If anybody resident wants me to come and talk to me, or if they want me to come to talk to them, I would do that. I'm very open for suggestions. I know there was a time in law enforcement that we didn't want the public's help because we were the cops. We could take care of it. But without the public, we would not survive. So again, thank you for giving me the twelve years as your sheriff and looking forward to your support on November fourth for my reelection.
Thank you. Ryan Alderman.
I'm ready to take on the role of sheriff of Clay County. I think our department can do a much better job reaching out to the new American populations. I think our department can do a much better job reaching out to the new American populations. Twenty years ago, when I started in this job, we had Hispanic interpreters in the courtroom on a regular basis. Right now, we see maybe once a month, maybe once every two months, we get a Hispanic interpreter. Every week, we have an Arabic-speaking interpreter coming into court to deal with the populations that are involved in the court process. We need to do some outreach to these communities, not just the new Americans, but all the ethnic communities in the area, and I will work to do that and foster some cooperation and trust in that role. I'm looking forward to taking on the challenge as sheriff, and with your support, we can move the department forward.
Thank you. John Everett.
First of all, I want to thank the, the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. It's, it's always a privilege to be able to participate in this. I also want to thank my opponent for the good, good campaign and race that, that she has won, run, and we've been family, friends for, for years, go to the same church, and so we, we don't have anything, I don't think bad to say about each other, so that's been positive. And the issues, a number of issues that I have tried to hold up in the campaign, they haven't talked about today. I mean, the jail is one, and we didn't get a chance to talk about that, but it's a big issue for us, and we, we are certainly working towards raising the money to, to get that done as needed. The landfill is a, is always a major issue, and we're, we're doing a number of initiatives to increase recycling and other things to extend the life of our landfill. And then ongoing need for transportation. We never have enough money to fix our roads, and that's something we're struggling with, trying to find ways in which we can do that better. So I'd love to serve you again for another four years, if that's your desire.
Thank you. Jenny Mojo.
Thank you. Having lived in Clay County most of my life, I'm proud that my roots run deep here, and I'm, I'm proud to say that my husband and I are raising our children on the farm that my great-grandfather founded in nineteen oh three. I think it's important that there, like I said, a, a new leadership steps up to take our place among, among the leaders. I am very honored to be sitting next to two people that have combined thirty-four years on the county commission, and that's a great thing. I've observed great leaders in our county, and it is my intention to take my place and become one of those. If elected, I intend to be your strong voice on the county lead, on the county board for people of all ages. I have the energy, the desire, and the skills to effectively serve you on the county board. Many years ago, our county was found, our nation was founded on people, by people that were thirty-five. I don't think that, that age is a, a num, I think it's a number, really. And when they step forward with fresh ideas to establish our county, our country, excuse me, it was important that they did so, and it's my intention to do so as well.
Thank you. And finally, from Kevin Campbell.
All right. Thank you. Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the library for having us here today. And I just want to make one real quick comment that it's kind of hard for me to go someplace to talk to somebody when I have never received an invitation. It's hard to know when they want me to go there. So, but going back a little bit about my final time here, earlier this spring, Mr. Gordon is right, that I had considered not running, and I hadn't made it final, but I had put it out there public on my Facebook page that, that said that I was considering not running. And it was through that, when I did that, that I received enormous support and requests to run again. And that really touched me a lot, that I, that people felt that confident in me that they wanted me to run, go back and run. Since then, I have put in my resignation notice with my other job. So the end of March, I will complete forty years as the accountant for Max Hardware. But I do appreciate the work of District Four that I've done, and I, I'm proud to have served you all, and I do ask for your support again.
All right. Thank you. Just to kind of wrap up, it looks like the next forum that we will be having is House Four B. Also, later in the day, we will have for, House Four A, and then we will give the District Nine judge candidates a chance just to give a statement. So we want to thank, oh, and the school board. They're not on our, our list here. So the school board will also be coming up later today. And I do just want to invite everyone that if you're interested in learning more about the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley, you can visit our Facebook page or our website to get information on how to become a member, and also look at some of the other community activities that we have going on throughout the year. So thank you, everyone, and thank you to the candidates.